Seven o'clock, straight up. It's spring. Wonderful, huh? We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Is Brad Ruggles here? He's supposed to... Well, it's pretty bad when the preacher can't even get in to get a seat. So, Joe Edwards will lead us in prayer, if you would, following the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Keen, your meeting, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 11th City Council Meeting. Glad that you're here. I hope that you enjoy it. I will point out that this meeting is being recorded and will be placed on the website probably tomorrow. You can find it by going to the Agenda for tonight's meeting. And in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see Streaming. Meeting Streaming, I think, is how it's referred to. And the last month, it worked pretty well. There were actually two cameras, one on up here and then split between the speaker and screen over there. So, you see everything, and the audio was quite good. So, that's not an advisement for those who want to speak that you're on camera. That's just to let everybody know that they can find it and share it with their neighbors because it will be, I'm sure, a good meeting to look at. Clerk, if you would, call the... Notify us of a quorum, please.
Joe Edwards?
Here.
Bob Horkay?
Here.
Mark Keen?
Here.
Jim Aig?
Here.
Steve Hoover?
Here.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Here.
Chuck Lehman?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
There are no changes to the Agenda, so we'll move on to the Approval of Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the Council Minutes of February 11th, 2019?
Move.
Moved by Cindy Spaljeric?
Second.
Second by Jim Aig. Any comments of changes to be noted? If not, by voice, vote, all in favor of approving the Minutes. Please signal by saying aye.
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 No opposed. Onto Claims. Need a motion to approve Claims.
Motion to approve Claims.
Robert Horkay, approve Claims, second. Second by Joe Edwards. Any comments, questions about the numbers? Again, by voice, vote, all in favor of approving Claims, please signify by saying aye.
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 All approved. Onto our special presentation. Colleen Quinn, Administrative Coordinator with DWA. Would you like to come forward and let us, everyone, know of this change and what's going on with DWA?
Okay. Where's the... Where's the... Oh. Okay. Thank you. So, good evening. I'm Colleen Quinn, and I am the Administrative Coordinator of the DWA, Downtown Westfield Association, which I will refer to as the DWA for the presentation. I have stepped in as the point person. Teresa Skelton, as the first of the year, stepped down and is back on our Board of Directors. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and give a brief overview of the current events and programs managed and offered by the DWA. So, I currently am the staff person at the DWA. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, and I'm not going to read all the slides, but here's our mission statement, which is written in our bylaws. We have seven board members, two of whom joined us this year. They're really a dynamic group of men and women and represent many different roles within the Westfield community. We did have a board retreat in January and set goals and objectives for the year. We do utilize many different forms of marketing and marketing tools to promote DWA events and programs. Our website has been a little bit, let's say, lacking, and so I'm in the process of working to elevate it to a level which will allow us to be one of the go-to sites for people when they're looking for information about what's going on in Westfield, specifically the downtown. We are working on creating a membership packet and hope to roll that out in 2020, and it will include these items. The DWA currently has several leases that we manage on behalf of the city. We have one unoccupied but hope to have that filled soon. We do have an interested tenant for that space. All right, the font's a little off. It was a Mac and converted it into a PC. So, some of the fonts will opt there. So, the Grand Junction Task Group falls under the umbrella of the DWA. It was created in 2008 with nine original members. At that time, they started discussing what we now know as the Grand Junction Implementation Plan. The Task Group serves as review board for downtown development and redevelopment. This information on the addendum can be found on Page 5 of the Grand Junction Addendum. The information supports, as I mentioned, that the Grand Junction Task Group currently serves as a review board. The next group of slides show examples of projects which all became... came before the Task Group while seeking formal approval from the city. So, we have, of course, this is Chiba on Park Street. These are downtown businesses and residents which presented to the Task Group about rezoning needs. And, of course, we have the Field Brewing. The Grand Millennium Center, which, as you can see, is east side of 31 from 169th to Park Street, presented by Edge Rock Development. And we have Junction North, which is a residential development. And, of course, Riverview Health with the Westfield Hospital and the Helipad. This is our dining guide. It's a wonderful and inexpensive tool we use to help promote the downtown Westfield restaurants. It's a tear-off pad, and we have them at all our events for the... free for the taking. It's in the process of being updated. It will show Greek's Pizzeria new location and include Conan Crumb, which is opening in April. It's being opened by Rayo Restaurant Bar and Co. near Toby and Melanie Miles. The new guide will also include the Field. Last year, we had our first dinner party on Union. It was the inaugural event. It was a fundraiser for the DWA, and we will also be contributing something to Grand Junction. And it was a great success, and we plan on it being an annual event. We have the date for next year, September 14th. It will take place, again, right on Union Street. We do have an alternative if Indiana weather does not cooperate, which, as we all know, is a good possibility. The Winter City Market. We just wrapped up our third winter market this past Saturday at the Westfield Lions Club, and we really had a good turnout. We're now looking forward to the summer market and the amazing summer season we're going to have. The summer market opens June 1st. We have a great group of vendors lined up for the summer season. And although we currently run the market from June through August, I do hope to extend the season from May through September, once we move to our permanent home in the Grand Junction Plaza, and we're very excited about that. Hoping to do September... go through September this season as well. We also have our Party on the Patio season for 2019, and we're looking forward to that. I'm sure many of you have been to these events and know it's a great evening of mingling with friends and neighbors at a downtown restaurant or a merchant... downtown merchant. We do have great opportunities for sponsorship. As a DWA, we rely on our sponsors, and it's because of them that we are able to put on these great downtown events. We rely on sponsorships for the financial aspect of the events, and also, we rely on volunteers to help with setup, tear-down, and sometimes during the events. The Park Street Shuttle, which was generously provided by Moyer Fine Jewelers, has not been in operation for about a year. We do hope to, once again, get it up and running this year as well. I had a conversation with Westfield Welcome regarding a driver partnership for hospitality, training, and education for the shuttle drivers, maybe a little education on Westfield history and development that they could pass along to their occupants. And here again is the DWA contact information and my contact information. Please feel free to reach out to me anytime. I do have my cards with me also. And thank you so much for your time, and unless there are any questions, please my presentation.
Any questions from any councilor?
Few questions. It's something, I guess, I just don't understand. Who is actually considered a member, and do they have to buy in? I mean, what is the membership exactly?
We do not currently have a membership through the DWA. That is something we're working on and hopefully will be rolling out in 2020. So, there actually is not currently, like, a membership, like, an actual membership.
So, there's not... not members of the association, really?
Right. Right, yeah. But we do hope... that is what we hope to have. We do want to have that, so... Yeah.
All right. Onto old business. Ordinance 18-11. Pam.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Council, Pam Howard of the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for your consideration, I have a new PUD district to be known as Lyons Team PUD to accommodate a real estate office. The site is located at 750 Liberty Drive within the Centennial Development. The existing building, which was constructed in 2000, was previously used as a utility building for a local Internet provider. Utility uses are permitted in all zoning districts. The petitioner, Mike Lyons, has acquired the property to use as a real estate office. The purpose of the PUD is to permit the office-related uses and also legalize existing nonconformities on the site. This item does come to you with a favorable recommendation from your February 19th Plan Commission meeting. I have Mike Lyons here. He does not plan to present but is available for questions, as am I, if you have any of the department. Thank you.
We have a motion on Ordinance 18-11.
I move for approval of Ordinance 18-11 Lyons Team PUD.
Motion by Jim Aig, is second.
Second.
Second by Cindy Spaljeric. Discussion. Any questions or comments? Any non-clerk, please call or roll.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Aig?
Yes.
Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Pam. Ordinance 19-02, the Lancaster PUD, Jonathan.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Jonathan Dorsey. For your adoption consideration tonight, it's Lancaster Plan Unit Development for the properties located west and adjacent to Spring Mill Road and north and adjacent to 186th Street, totaling approximately 145 acres. Plan Unit Development will change the current Spring Mill Trails PUD, nay, GSF1 zoning, to an enhanced single-family high-density and a single-family attached zoning. Lancaster PUD is proposed to have a maximum of 490 lots split between single-family homes in green, duplexes in blue, and townhomes in yellow on the screen. This item is coming to you with unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Tonight, the petitioner is available for questions but will not be giving a presentation, and staff is available for questions as well.
We have a motion on Ordinance 19-02.
Move to approve Ordinance 19-02 Lancaster PUD.
Motion to approve by Steve Hoover, second.
Second by Robert Horkay.
This did receive quite a few changes since the last... since it was introduced. Petitioner worked with APC, with neighbors, and with those of us on the Council who had input to... made quite a few changes to get this to the level that it is now that got the unanimous favorable recommendation.
Any other comments, questions?
I would say I did have a lot of comments on the original plan. I'd like to thank the petitioner for making some of those suggested changes. There's still a lot I wish I saw in there that I'm not seeing, but I appreciate the favorable recommendation.
Any other comments? If not, clerk, please call or roll.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
Did I get everybody? Jim Aig?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Ordinance 19-04, the Oak Manor North PUD Amendment.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening is the proposed amendment to the Oak Manor North PUD specific to a parcel approximately one acre in size located north of State Road 32, just east of Gracie Branch Marketplace, that a tire-discounter store may be built on the site. As you may recall from the February 11th introduction, this amendment's necessity stems from the proposed modification of the adjacent trail corridor so that the proposed business parking lot may connect to the adjacent auto zones. At planning staff's request, the petitioners agreed to repeal the existing zoning, which currently defaults to the 2003 Westfield-Washington Township ordinance, and instead default to the UDO. And because this new PUD would default to the UDO, relief from certain standards are requested. Since the Council introduction, the petitioner has revised their landscape plan so that it now, instead of tying a specific landscape plan to the PUD, it does default to the UDO. Additionally, the petitioner has added language to the PUD requesting an aggregate amount of signage on the property. This item received a public hearing at the March 4th, 2019 Plan Commission meeting. There was no discussion, and it is forwarded to you this evening with a unanimous favorable recommendation. This item is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. Tim Dwyer, on behalf of Leasman Engineering, is present and does not plan to make a presentation but is available for questions, and I'm available for questions with staff. Thank you.
We have a motion on Ordinance 19-04. Move to approve Ordinance 19-04. Robert Horkay moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Aig. Questions? Questions or comments from Council?
I do. There's something I've been trying to get over. There's two things, and primarily, we have these overhead doors facing State Road 32 right away, and I know we typically wouldn't allow that, at least for oversized overhead doors. And from what I've seen of places like this, they remain open a lot. It's very loud, usually a fair amount of dirt and other things happening there, and that concerns me for the 32 overlay, as well as the monument sign. I was trying to get over that, but changeable copy and a monument sign in our overlay, I just don't think is warranted. We have a chance to change that, and we're not, so I think we can do better.
Other questions or comments? Clerk, please call or roll.
Bob... Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Jim Aig?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
No.
Motion carries 6-1.
Okay. Resolution 19-101, this will require a public hearing, so I'll let Tammy give us an introduction.
Council President, members of the Council. For the record, my name is Tammy Havard, and I'm a financial strategist for the city of Westfield. Tonight is the public hearing and adoption consideration for Resolution 19-101, a resolution to reestablish the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, also known as the CCD Fund. As mentioned in the introduction, the reestablishment of the rate is an annual process that allows the Council to set the rate at a maximum of five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value for taxes payable in 2020. Our CCD rate for 2019 is currently five cents, so there's no change to the rate maximum. The CCD rate is included in our current rate, and it is subject to the tax caps. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions from Council? I said this does require a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor for any public comment. At 7:21, three-minute limit for any comments. I will close the hearing at 7:22. It's a fast minute. Future ones will be just as fast. No. With that, do I have a motion on Resolution 19-101?
So move.
Motion made by Joe Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Robert Horkay. Questions or comments from councilors?
This is a continuation of practice we've done for a long time, so...
All right. Call or roll.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Steve Hoover?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Bob Horkay?
Yes.
Jim Aig?
Yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Onto Ordinance 19-05, and actually, we're going to look at 19-05 and 19-06. Both require public hearings on the same topic, so we're going to combine the public hearing when we get to that. Our cards have been turned in so far. Matt Skelton's going to read the cards, read the names on the cards for people to present. You'll have three minutes. Brian Zager will give the count, and do you give a one-minute indicator, Brian?
One minute.
You give a... I mean, three minutes, but you give a one-minute-to-go type of thing? Okay. So the speakers know, I would ask that... we do not do a lot of repetition of the same thing. However, it's your right to do so. I will say, I've received some emails and public contact. I will express appreciation for most of the comments I've received have been very thoughtful, very, very pointed and respectful, and I appreciate that. It gives us a chance to sit back and reflect, and I hope that the same thing occurs during the public hearing. We're here to discuss an issue, not people. So, keep to the topic, and we'll move along the way. John Rogers, are you going to make a presentation to begin this, I believe, a timeline and some financial data, and then we'll open the public hearing?
Yes, sir. For the record, my name is John Rogers. I'm the Director of Enterprise Development. This evening, we're going to take you through some of the processes, and we're going to begin tonight. I'd like to actually ask Andy to step up here, Mayor Cook, and we're going to walk you through some of the basics of the park.
Yeah. We're going to start... Well, as you know, tonight begins really a culmination of 12 years of work on the word downtown. It started many years ago with the adoption of a comprehensive land use plan. Joe Plankis in the audience directed that process many years ago. And a chapter of that entire plan called for a vibrant destination downtown. And commencing upon that very shortly, the Grand Junction Task Group was formed to take a look at what it would take to fulfill that mandate that the citizens of Westfield had elected to produce. So, we'd like to walk you through some of the extensive history. Matt Skelton will do that. Jeremy will go through the physical plan for the park, and then Tammy and John and some of our outside financial people will walk us through the financial plan for the plaza. So, Matthew?
Yes. Well, in response to a couple of comments that the Council has received regarding a perceived lack of opportunity for input or public input, I've been asked to just recover some of the history that brings us here this evening, and it's extensive, and I'm going to try to cover it in a very short amount of time so I don't take up a lot of time here. But there's a whole lot of work that went in to these various stages. The different colored text at the top represents the period of time before the Grand Junction Task Group existed. The first... there were some... there was some planning work that happened before 1993, but 1993 was really probably the first classic, you know, from a professional perspective, planning that happened in downtown, and it was a Ball State exercise. Jumping forward here to 2007 is the comprehensive plan that the mayor just mentioned, and that was enacted almost immediately, right before we became a city. So, we've been operating under that plan, and in the many amendments that have happened, there have been almost 22 amendments to the comprehensive plan since 2007, so it's constantly updated. The Grand Junction Task Group was formed in 2008. They, of course, were not called that at the time. They didn't know what they were called at the time, but they were really involved in planning. And ever since that group has... that grassroots group has come together, it's pretty much, you know, led the planning efforts for downtown every since. And many of those members I recognize here in the audience. The... I think of note, in 2009, the Grand Junction Master Plan was adopted by this body. It was heard before the Plan Commission and adopted by the City Council as the policy objectives for downtown. This was a robustly public process. I don't know of a process that's been more highly publicized in my planning career, and I was proud to be a part of it. The... ever since then, these shaded areas are all very robust public input processes that happened along the way. This does not include everything. I just included the ones that are specifically related to the plaza area. There's other Grand Junction work that has been done that is not reflected in this timeline. But in preparing for this evening, it just... it's all... it always strikes me when I read the Grand Junction Master Plan, because if you look at the plan that you adopted in that plan, the actual... the physical plan in there, it is remarkably similar to what is... you're being asked to fund this evening. And many of the policy objectives that are set forth in that plan have not changed in 10 years, and not the least of which is, and I'm just going to paraphrase one little paragraph, "The crown jewel of the Grand Junction is a new civic plaza in the heart of downtown, a focal point, a central gathering space, a signature location for festivals and special events." That's under a paragraph called Grand Junction Plaza. Even 10 years ago, it was called Grand Junction Plaza. So, since then, there's been thoroughfare plan changes to come into line with the Grand Junction plans. There's been all very public processes, design activities along the way. I think one of the most important planning documents that this body has adopted in the last 10 years is the Grand Junction Implementation Plan. It took every planning work that the city had done prior to that time related to downtown, brought it all together, organized it, made sense out of it, and out of this grassroots group, the Grand Junction Task Group, came 10... the top 10 planning priorities for downtown Westfield. And of those, I think I have... And of those, I think I have, it's hard to read these, but, and I can, this is page four of the Grand Junction Implementation Plan. If anybody wants to look it up, it's very easy to find. But every one of these has either been initiated or completed, to some extent, as far as it could be. And the plaza, this is just specifically related to the plaza, I mean, the instruction in this plan that was adopted by everybody said, "Develop and construct the public park facility that has come to be known as Grand Junction Plaza." So that was part of that planning exercise, and every since then, if you look back at the timeline, so that's the 2013 timeline there, everything that has happened since then is a direct result of that instruction. And I think in 2016, it was even further refined in the Junction Sub District Plan addendum, which really just focuses on the heart of this, not, I mean, the Grand Junction District is a big district, but the Junction subarea is very small, and it includes, it includes the Grand Junction Plaza. And there were some very specific planning objectives set forth in there, but the most important is almost the exact plan that you're being asked to fund this evening that's been publicly adopted. So with that, I think Jeremy can probably update from there. Coming forward, there's been several construction projects and design activities, and he'll cover in some more detail.
Thank you, Matthew. For the record, again, Jeremy Lawler, Director of Public Works. As you all know, we've been working on this project for a very long time. My role tonight is to talk to you about kind of where we are, how we got here, and answer some of the questions that have come out of our recent, I guess, neighborhood meetings. This rendering here is actually from 2017, so it's changed a little bit, but it gives you an idea of what we have out there today. And as you recall, back in fourteen, we had a pretty massive flood downtown. The entire area that you see there was effectively under anywhere from a foot to six feet of water. As a result of that, we had to build what is the Regional Detention Basin. It's just south of the picture you see there, the levee and the weir associated with the Detention Basin, which will protect our downtown and allow it to prosper and grow. One thing I do want to point out is, as you can see, we constructed this road and this project completely with the idea and concept of Grand Junction in mind. So that southern border you see there is the southern border of Grand Junction Plaza. This is the rendering of the complete project. I know we've all seen this quite a few times. I just wanted to pull this up real quick to show you where we'll be if you all choose to fund this project. In summer of 21, we'll have a physical park down there that is representative of everyone's This is a breakdown of the, really overview, high-level overview of the costs associated with the different components of the park. You all have seen this several times. I won't spend a great deal of time going into that, but I'm happy to answer any questions. One thing I did want to answer was, it was heard very clearly and loudly in our group meetings that there was concern associated with an IBJ article that came out in 2016. That article stated that the cost of construction of the park was $25 million. My response to that is, in fourteen, when we started the real design of the park, this latest rendering, not the ones that preceded it, our target budget was $25 million. Those dollars were $14. As we came through that project, when we got in, toward the end of 2016, when we were wrapping up construction documentation, or CDs, construction drawings, the actual estimate of the park was substantially more than that. So we embarked on a very extensive value engineering and estimating process with two different construction companies, effectively paid them to bid the project out as if they were going to build it. Through that, we removed components, including an entire building of the park, and really value engineered other things as well. When we came out of that, that cost of the park was $28 million. So it effectively went from forty-two at the end of CDs down to $28 million is what we came out of construction documentation with. When you take that $28 million and you add escalation and contingency, and then, if you'll see at the bottom of the line there, the issuance and the interest costs associated with constructing the project, that's how you get to your $35 million. So the actual cost of construction is arguably about $31 million is what we're estimating right now, the best estimate we can get. It is a construction project, and once we, if we are so fortunate, take it to bid, we'll work through any complications that come along with it being over budget, if that were. I can say confidently, we've done everything in our power to ensure that we have the most fine-tuned number that we possibly can. The other hot topic was parking. So you've all seen this before. I wanted to take this and drill it down a little bit further. Essentially, the concept of this slide is showing that we're taking sixty parking spots, and we're turning it into 277 over at the other end of Park Street. One piece of information that is new, or at least new to this slide, is that we did a full-blown parking study in 2016 with Walker Parking Consultants. That study determined that we needed 208 parking spaces in downtown to accommodate what our business was at that point in time. That was in 2016. So I took the liberty of really evaluating our public parking lots as they were in 2016. You can see them highlighted in yellow with the number associated with the number of spots that are in that given parking area. In 2016, at the time of the study, we had 121 parking spots. Since then, we have added fifteen spaces on Mill Street with the construction of Mill Street. We added 21 spots on Park Street when we changed that to a one-way for pedestrian safety as well as to accommodate parking, and we added 141 spots down on Park Street. It's the, it's the, it's the old Park Street Pub parking lot. We expanded and improved it and accommodated some parking there. The shuttle that Colleen was telling you about earlier runs essentially from that big red barn with the public parking sign on it that sits there today. So that's where we were in 2017. That brought us up to 288 spots, and that's where we are today, is roughly 288 spots. It's over our, I guess, our estimated need, at least back in 16. Our plan for 2019, once we go into construction of the plaza. You can see up in the top right corner, we are anticipating expanding the Redman Parking Lot. That'll add 23 spots, so we'll have about 50 over there. We are going to expand the Park Street Parking Lot and then add an additional parking area where Hardee's used to be. This is a partnership with the developer that we are actively working through. With that given information, it takes us to 389 current spots, or spots by the end of 2019, if we go to construction on the park. Another, I guess, note there, from a parking garage perspective, so that everybody understands the magnitude, it's about $25,000 a spot. So that 389 spots is about a $10 million parking garage that we are utilizing already, arguably free, flat-surface, public parking to accommodate. And then the last thing I have is, there was several comments or questions associated with State Road 32, and whether or not it was considered in the cost of the park, or if it was a separate project, and really how it would impact the downtown area. I can tell you that this is a complete schematic design. Nothing in here is set in stone or really even decided yet. We'll decide that as we go through design and determine, you know, the environmental impacts and et cetera. What I wanted to specify is that this is a partnership within, a 50-50 partnership of a $15 million contract or project that we've committed to spending half of that. So we're committing to seven and a half million. Obviously, if we can get it in below that, we're going to. One unique component is that this is going to be a City of Westfield-managed N-DOT project. So they haven't really done this anywhere else. They're piloting with us. We are choosing a consultant. We are designing the project. We are going to control as much as possible that goes on down there and the impacts of it. So just wanted to clearly, you know, call out the fact that this is a road project, not a park project, has a completely separate, different funding plan and strategy, and I didn't want anyone to be confused about where those money are coming from. It's still coming, and we're still doing it. With that, John and Tammy.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Matt, for your time today, too. Again, John Rogers, Director of Enterprise Development. We wanted to illustrate the growth in the city due to the economic development strategy that we've had in place for the last few years, and I think this slide does a great job of showing you the diversity of the growth and gives you a sense of magnitude of that growth. And these are just a few. I mean, we could do another slide, probably, or two, but this is part of what we've reaped, if you will, from the strategy so far. The Grand Junction Plaza will be another step in that economic development strategy. This, the plaza is, you know, I tried to come up with the right words, and it's this vibrant, unique amenity that will attract vibrant and unique businesses. And that's what, that's what will continue to diversify the economic development of the city. In addition, this project is not, this investment will not raise anyone's taxes. This is based on everything we have in place right now. And at this point, I'm going to have Tammy come up, and she's going to show you through OpenGov the history of those TIF revenues.
We have added a report called Grand Junction Plaza to our public financial transparency tool, OpenGov, to show where we've been and where we are. Looking back at where we've been in 2015, you can see we're right under $3 million in property tax revenue for the Core Four TIF, the Grand Junction East Side, Eagle Town, and Main Street. And you can see, just over three years, we've grown over 1.6 million to 4.6 million. The growth in projected new TIF dollars is what is expected to cover the Grand Junction debt. Remember that TIFs support capital projects, and they do not support operational costs like hiring a firefighter or a police officer. It is for capital use only. John is now going to talk about the projected growth and the new TIF dollars that that growth is expected to generate.
Thank you, Tammy. What I did to really simplify this, as you saw on the previous slide, we're right now at 4.6 million from the Core Four. And I put three trajectories. If you look at the lower, the current projection, that trajectory is based on things that we see in the pipeline and actually that are in the pipeline. So that is the projector, that is the projection right now that we're using. Above that is more of the reasonability test. If we were to grow at 10% year-over-year, which is, we're clearly growing faster than that as a community right now, and we've been doing so for some time, but if we grew at that 10% year-over-year growth, we would be at 8 million in new revenues. But to go to the absurd, if we continue to grow at the rate we're growing at right now, the current year-over-year would put us at well over, would put us at 23 million in revenue if we were growing at the rate we're growing at right now. Now, of course, if that happened, in the meetings that we have with the school, we meet frequently with the school, we would be talking about pass-through and all the other things that would go along with that, long before we got to this number. But this just shows you how conservative we are in looking at what it's going to take for this municipality to meet the reoccurring annual debt service of 2.4 million that we will be putting in place when we go to permanent financing. In this slide, I, we're illustrating, we're looking at the four largest cities in Hamilton County, and the debt per capita. And if you look at City of Westfield, even with the $35 million ban added to our current debt, we would still have the lowest debt per capita in Hamilton County as of right At this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Mayor Cook to wrap things up. I want to thank everybody for their time, and thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, John. Well, it's been a long road to get to this point. But we wanted to be sure that we do this physically correct. We only have one shot at this, and we want to be sure that we do it financially correctly, as John and Tammy have just shown you. I think there's three groups that I would like to explain to why this has taken us so very long. First of all, is the Grand Junction Task Group. To those that serve and continue to serve on this group, I tell you, they have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours donated, all citizens of Westfield, with just a little sprinkling of our staff members, that have guided this project. They have conducted hours of public invited meetings, the design serets, where we pin things on the wall, what you wanted to see. I would challenge any city to show more public input over a project per hour than what has gone into this. I want to thank them all extremely for their dedication to this overall project. They have a sense of pride in this, and I'm very proud of the way that we've used citizens' groups, like with Grand Park, with the Spring Mill Station, and other endeavors where citizens are very much involved, and they become truly a Westfield project. The second group I'd like to thank is, with their, for their patience, are the dozens and dozens of citizens of Westfield that I run into in my daily work, citizens that probably have never stepped foot in City Hall, nor ever will, who usually ask me, their comment is right along the same line, "Talk, talk, talk, when you going to build this?" And thirdly, I'd like to thank those that have made major investments in our downtown even without this project, and as they will all tell you, it is anticipation of this Jeremy spent a lot of time talking about parking. You know, six, eight years ago, we didn't have a parking problem. Of course, we didn't have hardly any businesses downtown. But in anticipation of a But in anticipation of a vibrant destination downtown, there has been millions of dollars already invested. Long Union, Long 32, and certainly the Park Street atmosphere that is drawing so many citizens from all over Hamilton County and beyond to downtown Westfield. This past week, one of our restaurants, The Greek Pizza graciously hosted, sponsored by DWA, a couple of informational meetings, a lot of the same information, a lot of our same people were here. And I was struck by one question a gentleman asked. He said, "Well, wait a minute. How can you prove to me that this will result in economic development?" And before I could even answer, another gentleman from downtown raised his hand and he said, "Sir, you're sitting in one of them." And that's exactly right. Greeks Pizza not only is an investor in Park Street, they are currently in their second location because they ran out of space where they were. And now, our good citizens at the rail have taken over the building where Greeks was and they're going to open up another new business. So, a lot has happened on that downtown in the five years that we've announced that this plaza hopefully will come to be a reality. So, tonight, we're going to ask the council to filter through the pluses and the minuses. I know we'll hear a lot of minuses. I hear mostly pluses. And the council has always done this. They'll be asked to make decisions on what is best for this city in the long term. That is what I've always asked them to do and it's exactly what they have always done. So, in order to create a unique downtown and in order, frankly, to keep our downtown at Union and Main, we cannot afford not to do this project. Dr. King?
Again, this will now be opening the floor for a public hearing. The public hearing will address both Ardenance 19-05, which is the authorizing of the bonds, and 1906, which is the additional appropriation for the bond notes. So, with that, Brian Zager is going to be our timekeeper. Matt Skelton is going to read the names. I will open the public hearing at 7:54.
Ron Thomas.
Ron Thomas, Seven Cool Creek Circle, Carmel, Indiana 46033. I am a citizen of Westfield. Our community was established back in 1834. It's 185 years ago. In the last 12 years, we've been a city, which is only 6.5% of that time. But our debt in that first 173 years was only $10 million total. We're now somewhere with this around 200 million. What's the rush of continuing to grow that debt so quickly? We don't need to be caramel with 1.3 billion in another 10 years. I'd ask you just to pause, get the financials out publicly, the entire thing. We're not seeing all of them. And, you know, let us know that we can grow a little bit slower. You know, schools, two referendums, there's a third one being rumored. TIF is taking millions away from schools every year. And we just, I think we need to pause and take a step back and say, "Hey, are we on the right course and are we moving the right pace or just too fast?" Okay? I'd actually vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marla Ailer.
Good evening, Marla Ailer. I live at 1602 East 203rd Street. I'm also additionally representing the fiscal conservatives of Hamilton County. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council, Mr. Mayor. Some of the following words and ideas that I will speak tonight are borrowed from a congressman from Texas because I feel they seem relevant to this particular agenda item. The role of our local government is not to tax us as much as possible while you dream up more and more ways to spend our money. This is about a difference in philosophy. You are not entitled to take someone's hard-earned money and use it only as you see fit. You cannot tax our community into prosperity, all while asking the public and this council to deny what they see simply to conform to group pressure. It's a question of whether you should take more of our money or allow us to keep more of our money. The role of our government is to tax people to the least extent possible while still taxing them enough to meet the basic needs of local government. And what this really comes down to is that you dislike those with different beliefs about this project. So, yes, it is my belief the funds you are willing to spend on Grand Junction Plaza might better be spent on something else like public parking, fire safety, and local infrastructure, including widening and adding roads before continuing to funding debt service with our local income taxes, when and until TIF money becomes available. The question of funding Grand Junction is absolutely about the wants of some rather than necessity in our community. What needs may be lost in reallocation of the funds provided. By and large, people who are surrounded by people who act as if there's nothing wrong will not respond. For this reason, I believe many of your constituents will not voice their opinions tonight. So, to fund this project without distinguishing the necessity for parking and displaced businesses is simply irresponsible, in my opinion. What will be the next issue on the list of priorities that this community is told it must pay for or suffer without? Can the taxpayers continue to afford the promises you make to them without knowing the truth behind operational expenses and return on their investment? Thank you.
Chris Bluto.
My name is Chris Bluto. I live at 16438 Lakeville Crossing, citizen of Westfield as well. I don't think that there's anyone that I've been in contact with that does not believe that the park is a beautiful piece that will contribute to our city and everyone believes it's a worthwhile project. But at the same time, almost all of those people have said that they do not think we are in a position or should spend the money to do it now without seeing some of the growth that we've expected to see. So, all the things that are being told to us about the growth are fantastic, but not much similar to going to a bank and asking to open a business with a loan. I don't see the collateral there yet. So, within all this work in 10 years, I would hope that there had been some type of investment on a larger scale for the types of jobs that would support the park, not just our, you know, tourism-type jobs, which we know there's a difficulty in staffing those and so forth. Those are all worthwhile as well. But everybody that knows anything knows those are not the kinds of businesses that are going to be, support a $35 million park. The other thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is I haven't heard anything regarding the actual operational budget on a yearly basis to maintain the park and staff it and do all the wonderful things that'll take place. I mean, there's going to be some fantastic things programmed there, but there's costs involved with that as well. So, there again lies a little more time in explaining to the public what else goes along with $35 million. And in many cases, we can see, too, that although we'd like to be able to make sure the project's at $35 million, we know full well, and even just hearing the presentation, that the chances are much greater that we go over. Most projects of this scale and scope do not end up on budget. So, I want to reiterate that I think that the Grand Junction Task Force has done a fantastic job. I think it's a worthwhile project. Like I said, I have not met anybody that does not believe that. But I don't think that the citizens are in this mode of, "We have to do it now," without knowing that there are things that need to take place first, showing the investment and the interest that are out there. So, please sell the park to some investors and let's move forward once we see some investment.
Justin Moffett.
Justin Moffett with Old Town Companies, based here in Hamilton County. We're both a residential and commercial building and development group. I've had the privilege and I take it as a responsibility of assisting multiple communities in the region with placemaking initiatives with the goal of enhancing the cultural experiences available to existing residents, along with encouraging private investment into downtowns. I certainly bring a bias, owning a private development company, to the conversation. I'll acknowledge that as I get started here. My company has a direct interest in Grand Junction Plaza as we have been developing plans for a mixed-use project on the block north of the park site for well over a year now. We take placemaking very seriously and want to make sure that we look at all possibilities before we bring a project forward to a community. It was the announcement of the park plans that initially caught our attention and drove our willingness to want to invest at least $25 million into downtown Westfield should the project go forward, should the park project go forward. It was really the park that drew our attention. I don't believe we are unique in our interests in Westfield. The construction of the Grand Junction park space will only draw more private investment into your downtown and increase the assessed value of all land around it. We are well aware of concerns related to parking in downtown Westfield. We share that concern as a property owner in the community. And it is our hope that we can work in partnership with the city to provide much of the needed public parking within our development plans on the block north of the plaza. Thank you very much for your serious consideration of this proposal before you tonight. Old Town, our company sincerely looks forward to the possibility of a partnership with the City of Westfield that hopefully will positively impact your downtown for generations to come. Thank you.
Melanie Miles.
My name is Melanie Miles. I'm a downtown resident, have been for about 13 years, also have three kids in the school system here. But I'm talking to you on behalf, as a business owner, tonight. My husband Toby and I opened Rail Restaurant on Park Street five years ago. It'll be in April. And we're getting ready to open another Conan Crumb, which will be ice cream and dessert. But when we looked around to find a place to open Rail, we didn't look outside of the downtown Westfield area. You know, we didn't look at all, just because we love Westfield. We had worked in Westfield before. We love the people. It's such a unique community, you know, and everybody here wants to keep that uniqueness. But we knew it was going to be a little bit of a challenge because we saw businesses come in and go and, you know, we'd get excited and then it'd just be gone. So, we knew it was just going to take a while. We would even joke and we'd say, "Well, we'll build it and hopefully we'll just make it till Grand Junction Plaza happens." But there is some truth in that. You know, we've, everybody along Park Street, you know, other people, Field Brewing, we've all invested our own money, you know? We haven't gone to get big investors. It's our money. It's our savings. It's our personal business loans we're taking out to invest in the community. So, you know, I had somebody ask me, "Well, you know, you're busy every Friday, Saturday." That's true. We are. We're packed. If you've been along Park Street, you'll see that. But that's not enough to make a business last. You have to be busy, you know, every lunch, every weeknight dinner to make that happen. So, we are, we built this rail and also Conan Crumb in anticipation of what's to come. So, it's, you know, it's very important for us to have that support also of the council because we've been waiting and, you know, it's not some giant monstrosity. It's a park where people can bring their families and they can hang out and they can listen to music, you know? But also, I've heard a lot about money, but there are so many opportunities for the, you know, sponsorship for the amphitheater and bringing in money. Hamilton County, some we partner with them. They actually just got an award because they did a media push around the Chicago area, but also around here. And they brought in over $62 million worth to Hamilton County through that. So, we have people we can partner with. We can bring in other money. It's not just about, you know, what we've talked about tonight. There are so many opportunities for everybody. But I just ask that the council look at us, small businesses, when you make your vote and think about how that affects us and what we're trying to do for the community. Thank you.
Sam Milligan.
My name is Sam Milligan. I'm a, I live at 2302 Oak Woods Lane here in Westfield. I am a downtown business owner and residential redeveloper here in downtown. Six years ago, I started looking around at different communities to redevelop. I looked at Fishers and Noblesville and Westfield and sat down with Mayor Cook and where he was able to show me what his vision for downtown was. And I got to see the early stages of Grand Junction Plaza. And I really, I thought it was great. And so, I decided to take a risk. And I decided to start buying lots downtown here, redevelop them, trying to take a very quiet corner on North Street and building new homes. It's, as part of that process, I had to get in front of the Grand Junction Task Group where I learned even more about it and was asked to be a part of that group and have been a part of that group for the last five years. The reason I decided to take a risk here in downtown was because of the plaza, because of what that was going to be. I would not have taken a risk had the plaza not been a part of the conversation. So, on behalf of myself as a resident here in Westfield and behalf of Northridge Construction and behalf of the owners that have taken the risk along with me with downtown, I ask you to vote yes. Thanks.
Forgive me if I get this wrong. Jen Legreca.
I'm Jen Legreca and I moved here four years ago from Chicago. I would just like to say that 30% of our population was not here 10 years ago when you conceived of this project. We have grown from 30,000 to 40,000 people in the last eight or nine years. And we are a significant part of the community. We're citizens. We're taxpayers. And we would like an opportunity to weigh in on this project. So, for me, it's a big deal what Grand Park is doing, what the financial condition of Grand Park is, what the whole accounting of that. Before we take on another high-ticket park recreation project, what is the success or failure of that? I would like to try to have time to bring myself up to snuff on this. I basically have a philosophical concern with the entire model. It starts with taxpayer-on-the-hook debt and a lot of promises, hopes, and dreams instead of with real assets from the private market, from private individuals who voluntarily give it. Your model grows government. It's more things for you to run. It's expanding your departments, hiring more people, expanding the funding that you have to operate with, expanding your power base of special interests who get out the vote for you. It's a socialist model. It's based on increasing public debt and government power. There is an entirely different model in our beautiful country that has built so many public benefit projects. For example, Carnegie Hall, how was that built? And how were all the initial libraries all around our country built with Andrew Carnegie's private money? The University of Chicago was built with John D. Rockefeller's money. Lilly Company and Family have contributed thousands of acres for parkland, for Eagle Creek Park, and for 65 acres for the Indianapolis Art Museum and New Fields. Hospitals, museums, theaters, parks all over our country have been built on a basis of private assets, not public debt. They've come from private companies and individuals. They've come from private companies and individuals and it requires a whole different way of looking at this, a whole different focus. It requires a sacred respect for the taxpayer and the fruits of our labor and a respect and a disinclination to tap into that and to step up our efforts to build businesses here to generate wealth and then to increase tax revenues and then we can afford it so they can contribute. Please postpone the vote at least until the election in May. Thank you.
Joseph Svek.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Joe, I'll speak a little louder, I'm far. My name is Joe Svek, I live on 1407 Old Briar in Carmel, that is actually Westfield. Post office war. I grew up in a country where government knows all, says all, does all. It brings me down to fundamentals of this country for which I risked my life to live in for 49 years. The fundamentals dictate that the role of government is based on the principle of providing safety and services only for which citizens cannot pay for individually. This must be done with utmost efficiency. It is not to act as a private enterprise. That must be left to the private businesses only. It is not up to the government to create downtown, to provide grandiose spaces for people to meet, that one day two people may meet and have an idea that one day they will save the world or change the world. Those utopian ideas must be left to poets and playwrights. All that construction and those ideas to come to fruition must be left to private enterprise only. It is not a business of government to build this kind of projects. Administer what we need, service what we can afford otherwise and then step out of our way. That's the government direction. To buy into such Gulate process is inappropriate and uncalled for. Let us not follow one terrible failure of Grand Park with another Grand Junction. This insignificant patch of dirt with a tremendous cost beyond all reason and common sense. We don't need it, we don't want it and it must not be built. Please vote your conscience. Thank you.
Russell Burge.
Good evening, Russell Burge, 1451 Old Briar Lane, Westfield resident. Taxpayers need more time to understand this large and complicated project. What are the costs of this project? We saw multiple numbers presented to us tonight dancing about, so it's difficult to really understand what those costs might ultimately be. And how much debt would have to be paid by the taxpayers? We were told flat out tonight, no impact on taxpayers. I have to say, that sounds a little dubious to me. I have to ask, was there a full economic assessment performed on this, on this project? Who did it and when? I saw Ball State listed, that was 1993. I don't know if they actually did this work. Was there a report developed and is it publicly available? Was the analysis scrutinized by an independent party? And were the assumptions in these analyses stress-tested? Were there multiple sensitivity analyses conducted to really understand the likelihood of such a project being successful and showing a positive outcome in terms of cost-benefit analysis? And so what this boils down to is that it should be a thorough and rigorous cost-benefit analysis, factoring in all of the relevant costs, all of the potential revenues, including opportunity costs. Every dollar of revenue, every dollar of resources that goes into this project is $1 less that can go into some other alternative project. So as taxpayers, we need to fully have time to fully review this, this project and especially given it's a major project falling on the heels of Grand Park. And as a concerned taxpayer who's about to see his property taxes go up at least 30, maybe 40% to fund the schools, I'm asking the city council to delay this vote to allow further review and for greater transparency on the evaluation of Grand Junction. Thank you.
Mike Johns.
Hi, I'm Mike Johns, 1450 Old Briar Lane in Westfield. I'd like, first of all, I'd like to thank the Grand Junction Task Group for all the hard work and then they put in over the last 10 years to bring this project to where it is today. And I want to say you've designed a magnificent park, but I'm also going to say that I think it may be a little bit on the, over the top. Okay, and I'd like you to consider this. You can, for $35,000, you can get a pretty nice car. For $350,000, you get a really nice house in Westfield. For $3.5 million, you could buy the Hilbert Mansion on 28 acres and a garage full of Mercedes. And for $35 million, we're going to get a six-acre park. So with due respect, I think we strayed a little bit from the initial Grand Junction plan for vibrant destination. Nowhere in the plan does it say to create a quote landmark park for the Midwest. Being one of the top 1% of real estate brokers in Hamilton County, I'd like to tell you that my clients are moving to Westfield because of the school system and because of the low tax rates. They're really not being attracted here and wouldn't be attracted here just because of a Grand Junction. I'm asking the council to put a break on the implementation of this program and until we can reevaluate the $35 million. Most residents that I've heard from don't object to a small central park, a green space. What they object to is they want to understand the $35 million and they're a little concerned that that $35 million, if paid off over 25 to 28 years, is it $35 million or is the real all-in sum $150 million? Let's, let's have some scheduled public meetings with, with all of our residents. Let's have the council members attend all these public meetings so that they can hear. The plan's been 10 years in, in the making and I don't think there's any reason to rush, especially at this point when there's so many unanswered questions. I think the project is too large an expense to move forward without further consideration and I'd like to ask you all to consider that this evening. Thank you.
Teresa Oda-Skelton.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Teresa Oda-Skelton. Thank you for hearing all of us this evening and all that you do to serve our community. I am here this evening as not only a resident of the community for 64 years as of last month, but also to represent our Grand Junction Task Group. These people have been meeting, as it's been mentioned over and over, for over a decade now, long before I stepped in, which was, I came in in about 2011 sometime. It's a very vibrant group. It's made up of a lot of talented people. They have held numerous public hearings. They have held numerous events to, and forums to make sure that this was transparent and that this was well thought out. February 12th, the Grand Junction Task Group met after it was introduced to this, to this council and there were 25 people that were, attended that meeting that were part of the Grand Junction Task Group. We asked the city, some of the city folks to come and do a presentation and to help understand the fiscal plan, all of the concerns that have been brought up tonight. It was well, well-presented. There was a clear understanding, a lot of discussion, about a two-hour discussion. When we left there, one of the rules that we have at Grand Junction Task Group, everyone participates. Everyone has a say. I went around the room, I solicited all of the opinions. It was unanimous with 25 people that we wanted you to do what we started. We started this in 2013 with this plan that you're all very familiar with. 2016, we had this addendum. There are 10 points in these, in this addendum that prioritizes and also states very clearly what this is. Most of them have been accomplished or there's a solid plan in place, except for one, build the park. I believe you have a solid financial plan in front of you this evening and I beg of you to finish what we all started way back. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Mary Pat Forkin.
Dr. Mary Pat Forkin, I've been a resident of Westfield since 1986. Facts, Grand Park price tag was $45 million and an article in the Indiana, in the Indianapolis Star, 8/20 of 14 reads the following. March of 2014, the water utility was sold for $44 million. Grand Park project is over budget. City council voted 5 to 1 to lend $6 million. Administration said it will be repaid through future sponsorship revenue and litigation windfalls. Council members said the vote was the best of a series of bad options. No established timetable for repayment of the $6 million. Sponsorship monies were supposed to be dedicated to other operational expenses, said one council member. Community was told the utility proceeds were not going to be used for Grand Park. The current Grand Park debt is over $113 million. Indiana, the IBJ, 9/2 of 17, city quietly purchased the Grand Park Event Center and bound the city to a $26.65 million loan. City council made the decision without public debate or having it on the official agenda. No discussion about the purchase at any public meeting. The initial payment was listed on page 24 of a 32-page claims docket the council approved December 12, 2016. Member of the Board of Indiana Coalition for Open Government said the situation raises eyebrows at the very least. Former three-term mayor of Fort Wayne, the bottom line is this is the public's money and they have the right to know where the money is going. Chuck Lehman, the decision to buy the facility had been discussed publicly for years, so it didn't need to be brought up again at the time of purchase. None of the debt of Grand Park has been paid using TIF dollars, even though city officials pitched the park as an economic development project that would spur revenue to help pay the debt. To date, Grand Park debt and operating expenses have been backed by local income tax revenue and any and all city revenues. Mayor, last Monday, I asked you who owned the properties associated with the Grand Junction Plaza. You said it is public record and you're not sure why I would even ask. 2007, property at 217 Union Street was purchased by Benjamin and Brian Cook. 2008, Grand Junction Task Force begins among the members Steve Hoover, McMeed, Ken Kingshill, Teresa Skelton, Melody Jones and Bob Beauchamp. 2012, Grand Junction Properties 1 and 2 was created as a real estate resource for businesses looking to relocate to Grand Junction. Grand Junction Properties 1 and 2 are owned by Bob Beauchamp. 2012, property acquisition begins for Grand Junction project. 2017, the Cook brothers sell the property to the city of Westfield for $250,000 paid by the Grand Junction TIF. Sales disclosure, evidence, question of is there any existing family or business relationship between the buyer and the seller was answered no. So today, there was land speculation on a public, not a private development based on promises of Grand Junction and now some of these speculators are demanding passage of this project. In 2008, the mayor said, "Dream big." No budget was established for Grand Junction project. $35 million is big. The dreams of this mayor, council and Grand Junction force may end up a nightmare for the taxpayers of Westfield. When I worked the emergency room, when a bleeding patient arrived, the first thing we would do was to stop the bleeding or lose the patient.
Time is up now, please.
Please stop the financial hemorrhage or risk losing this fine community. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tom Smith. I live at 167 South Cherry Street here in Westfield. I've been involved with this project in one way or another for about 10 years, although I was never a member of the Grand Junction Task Force. I'm aware of the excellence of the project, the beauty of the project and the necessity for the project. I'm here all, I'm here also representing the Westfield Playhouse Board of Directors. We decided in the summer of 2016 that we wanted to find some way to be a part of what is going to be a great and beautiful future in downtown Westfield. In our view, Westfield is lucky to have the perfect partnership of for-profit businesses, government and not-for-profit businesses, not-for-profit organizations such as the Westfield Playhouse. And we wanted to be a part of this project. And one of the larger reasons that we wanted to be a part of this project was the existence and the future existence of this park. It's going to be a beautiful amenity and it's going to bring down not just our, our art representations, but concerts and recreation and draw more and more people downtown. When I became involved in government in 2008 here in, in the city of Westfield, we all agreed, everybody agreed, that the vibrant downtown was the number one goal that we had in mind and however we could, however we were able to make that happen. And that would have to be economic development, that economic development is taking place and has taken place. Please, please support this long-awaited project. Thank you.
Mike Lee.
Two and a half years ago, my wife Pam and I decided that we wanted to be involved with downtown Westfield. We moved from Oak Manor, had a house built in an area where the houses were dilapidated, falling apart, needed a lot of help. Now there are three of us, three homes in that area and more to come. And I can tell you that a lot of the ideas that we had, we wanted to come down and be involved with this park. We can walk it and you're going to have more people involved that'll want to live downtown and walk and bike and that's why we moved here. I appreciate your yes vote.
Evidently, we have more cards.
One, two, three.
Didn't want to interrupt.
Go ahead and go.
Okay. Lyndon Ass, 1122 East 161st Street, speaking for the 161st Street neighbors, thank you for the opportunity. I was here in 1993, I was here in 2005 to 2007 when we did the comp plan. I was in 2011 meeting at the Chamber of Commerce where I paid for lunch to find out what Grand Junction was and I followed it going forward. I asked this council to please stop, reconsider, get some more details. The debt and the interest are too high and there's really no return on investment that merits this. We ask you to use budget as a verb. Who pays? At times, the mayor has said, "We need this to leave something for our children and grandchildren." Well, what we are doing is making sure our children and grandchildren and our parents and possibly our grandparents pay for this because the bond payments are pledged from local income tax. You send your teenager out to get a job or he wants to go out and get a job, he'll be paying for this park. So we work to draw people to Westfield so they can help pay for this. More people get to pay for this because you don't have to own property. It's not property tax, it's local income tax. I've read this document, it's 44 pages, 1905, 1906 is four pages. Nowhere in either of these documents is TIF, excuse me, TIF mentioned. There is no tax increment financing that you're being asked to approve here. So even though we saw that beautiful chart, it's not in these ordinances that you're being asked to sign. It isn't a donation either, as the paper said a few years ago, the city suggested donations or naming rights. We haven't been able to get that for Grand Park, so it's probably not happening for Grand Junction. Be lovely if it would. You will pay no more taxes, true. The cost of this is in the fact that this lit money won't be available for other uses in the city. Every year, we have used all lit monies received and it's been going up, yes, we've been growing. So what funds will be reduced to cover this additional debt service of well over $2 So what funds will be reduced to cover this additional debt service of well over $2 million? I believe it was shown as $2.4 million. You know, that's close to $60 million to pay this out at $39 million. It's not 35 million. The document says 39 million with an interest rate of up to 8%. We've never had debt of 8%. 5% is as high as we've gone, the school didn't go higher than 5%. So we need to understand what you're being asked to vote for, and there's been a lot of misleading information here tonight. So I ask you, I would say, we do need something to fill in downtown. I don't want to have to say to my new neighbors, "Welcome to Westfield, we're glad you're here to help us pay to spruce up the place for our visitors." I'm sorry that our mayor isn't proud enough of us as we stand, and because of the destruction and the bulldozing and what's going on downtown and the $25 million that we've already paid, we do need to put something in there. But I don't think this is it, and I don't think you've been clear with us about how it's going to be paid for.
Melody Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Melody Jones, I resolve, resolve, I'm sorry. I reside at 211 Mill Street, just a couple blocks from here. I am one of the original eight on the Grand Junction Task Group. We started in 2007. That was before we were become a city. And that was a result of the comprehensive plan, which outlined that downtown needed to be a special study. So that original group started to create that study and to work on what should downtown be so that we could secure the future of our community. We knew we needed a core or we would lose our identity. And that is what transpired. We went through three different design groups. We started with Hitchcock Design out of Naperville, Illinois, then Browning Day, and then Land Collective. And this was not an easy process. There were hundreds of people that participated in the Grand Junction Task Group. Anyone that wanted to come was welcomed, as Teresa alluded to. Over the years, anybody that was there was asked to participate, and it was open to the public. Those meetings started in different businesses in downtown and then ended up happening in the city hall until, or city service center, until DWA had a room big enough where we could all meet together. This has not been a process that has happened without a lot of thought and a lot of input and a lot of analysis of where we were financially. The last project, the project that's before you now with Land Collective, the collaborative team that Land Collective put together is an amazing team from not only here in Indiana, but across our country and included international people. They brought together the best of the best to provide our community with the best. And it wasn't taken lightly. There is a complete analysis of the finance of it. All of you should have seen it, if you haven't already, it's there. Jeremy Lawler has it probably in his office. This wasn't taken lightly, and I know if you research it and look at it, you'll agree that Tammy and John have done their homework. It's going to be a financial success, and it is what is critical to taking us to the next level. We've already had huge investment, Bob Beauchamp and Michelle investing in the properties on Park Street to create a wonderful amenity in our downtown from having restaurants and places to go, as well as other businesses. Route 31 is going to be opening in the spring, other shops and other things like the field. So, you know, it's already happened. It's not a speculation, it's true. And it's happening today, and we just need to take it to the next level. I would appreciate your vote for all the hard work, all of us that are part of this project from the very beginning have put in. We would love to have you take this to the next level and approve it. Thank you.
Julie Soul.
Good evening, councilors, mayor, staff. My name is Julie Soul and I'm a downtown resident. I moved into Westfield 37 years ago and lived out in the township and immediately was drawn to what the downtown was at that time. And beginning in 1993 professionally, became very involved in trying to do some things to draw attention to our downtown. In my prior position, we put together the first street banner program, the Christmas light program. I have a real love for the downtown. I respectfully disagree with what a lot of the people tonight have said about the negativity of this, the lack of transparency. I would just ask you to vote for this and to think about all the hours that so many people have put in on this and ask for a positive vote. Thank you.
McMeed has, I saw him waving a card.
McMeed.
I'm McMeed, I live on Oak Road in Westfield. I had a three-minute speech prepared, but Melody pretty well covered it. But one thing that hasn't been said is that in this room tonight are two outside financial experts that have assured the foundations of the bonding and the planning to finance it. It is already assured, it's already covered, the financing. Thank you.
Other cards, then I will close the public hearing at 8:37. One more, I'm sorry, go ahead, I haven't, I haven't gavelled it shut yet, so.
Judy Stanley Shuck, 209 West Main Street, and I happen to have lived on there, on that street, all but four years of my life. And I'm not going to tell you how old I am. Anyway, I was part of the DWNA that started in 2007. We had dues that we paid because it was Downtown Westfield Neighborhood Association. And we paid those dues, my husband and I paid those dues every year. I helped start the farmer's market in downtown Westfield and was very successful with that. But also, I have seen lots and lots of change to this community. When I was a little girl, there was a farm across the street from, from my house, and so I saw Wesley A. Drive built and everything like that. But I've also seen a lot of torn down, and that breaks my heart. But what I'm considering too, because I also have a, an accounting background in government accounting, and so therefore I look at these, I look at dollar figures, but I also look at what this brings to our community. You know, we used to play on Mill Street where the lumber mill was. And I've been in lots of plays, my children have been in plays throughout their childhood and, and young adulthood in this community. We're not against progress, we're not against change, but we want to be smart in the decisions that we make and how you use my money and their money. I'm a senior citizen. I don't have the chance to make more money, only if you want to buy a Grammy pot pie. Okay. So anyway, I'm a preservation, where you take buildings, which they have done, and restore them to make use of them, but we have to make smart decisions. A grocery store would be great downtown. A fresh time, how about that? I bet all those people on Union Street flats would love to walk downtown because I know I would. Let's make good use of the land.
All right, trying one last time. Close the public hearing at 8:40. I had asked, I had asked John and Tammy to kind of make any notes along the way where there are any clarifications that either of you wanted to make, any presentations, or we should move along.
For the record, Tammy Heather, financial strategist for the city. I did want to make one clarification on, I believe it was Linda's comment on lit and how we're using lit currently and the expected use of funding for Grand Junction. As mentioned in our presentation, we are planning to use the TIF revenues, the new growth, as we presented, and lit dollars are only the backup. So we are giving ourselves enough runway, as you saw in three years, that TIF growth was $1.6 million. We are, we know that there are developments coming and that will continue to increase that revenue stream. So we are planning, and we have given ourselves enough runway before the first payment is made, so that we do not have to use lit that does go towards operations of our city.
I would, I would add one more clarification. It was mentioned that the interest rate and the total amount of the debt, again, those are, those are parameters for you. We will clearly get a much better interest rate than that. And, and I just want to make sure that everyone understood that.
Okay. Then in order to begin discussion, I need a motion from council regarding ordinance 19-05.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 19-05, the city of Westfield authorizing the issuance of bonds.
Motion by Steve Hoover, is there a second? Second. Second by Robert Harkay. We have a motion and a second, time for discussion. Comments, questions from council?
I have a few things.
Sorry?
I have a few things.
I'm surprised.
I want to just tell the community, I have not slept well lately. This is not an easy decision, one way or another. There are consequences, positive and negative, whether we do something or we don't. A lot of people have spent a lot of time, we've already spent a considerable amount of money. I still have big reservations. You know, things don't always pan out like we think they're going to. You know, Grand Park is kind of doing its job, but it's not doing it as fast as we'd like. You know, the projections were a little bit off there, and yes, we are having to back that. So, you know, these things happen, and I understand that. But until we get on a really good footing with that, and that being all paid under TIF, I do have some major concerns about adding more debt to that. I, I've had so many variables play through my head with this, urban planning-wise, place-making-wise, money-wise. One thing that I asked for at the last meeting and I still don't have is the operational budget estimate and how that's going to play out. I still don't have that. I've asked for it many times, so.
There it is.
Where? No, I've been given no information, none. Well, a little late. I'm sorry, I'm frustrated. You're asking me for a vote.
Right now, we are estimating it to be somewhere under $700,000.
And, and can I have the information?
Sure, yeah, we'll, we'll put that together.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question about, on page nine of the agreement, it says that the bonds shall be dated as of the issue date and shall accrue interest from that date at a rate or rates not to exceed 8%. 8% right now, tax-free, is a pretty good deal. I would rather see that not to exceed 5% because if we hit 8% for some reason, that's another $9 to $10 million that we pay out. And I think we need to get a hold of that part of it to, to make this a bit more successful. My wife questioned me again speaking about another thing I feel. I think our forefathers were blessed with a feeling of simplicity. I don't know that we are doing that here, and I don't know that it really needs to be done, maybe my judgment is very faulty there. But I yearn for some simplicity in the design. This is probably a very late time to say that, but that's just my feeling on this. And I think we could, we could get a better deal if we did that.
I'd like to make a comment. When you look at development, commercial development, and a commercial developer develops a land in an office park, they do the best they can to incorporate something special in that park. Why? Because they want to have a class tenants in that building. A class tenants pay more rent, it becomes more desirable and lends itself to a successful project, and everybody wins. Millennials, we heard one at the Greek's Pizza the other night, moved here because of the potential of having the park located in downtown as it is. We've been at this 12 years or longer, depending on what date you choose to start the process. It's been vetted, we've had public meetings about this, and to have doubts at the 11th hour doesn't get us anywhere. I've heard tonight that, oh, we need to take another six months and, and decide where we're going to go with this. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, we have had this before us, we have had numerous meetings, and if you just moved here four years ago, you still had opportunity to weigh in. This has been an open process all the way through, and those people that I talked to are tired of waiting. The park will only cost more as we go forward, so that's not an issue. The 8% is not to exceed, and I don't see that as being a problem. We have done an excellent job of the financial analysis, and Cindy, to your point, I'm sorry, I've asked, I've had conversations, I asked the questions about the operations of the park, and I've gone out to the sources like John and Tammy, and I've even talked to our financial advisors about this, Jim Tree, Buzz Crohn's office, Bond Council, and other people. This is a very, very, this is a very, very important phase for our city to go through in terms of economic development. We have done nothing but lower your tax rate. Sure, our debt is higher than it was when we founded the city. We had dirt roads back then, too. I don't think anybody would like to go back to those days. And so paved roads cost more than dirt roads. We have done very well financially, our tax rate has come down. You saw our debt per capita up there on the chart, and it's the lowest of the other cities around us. The other thing we have to do, and I know you want free markets and you long for this and that, but we have to help our schools, and the only way we're going to be able to do that is through commercial enterprise and development. And we are on the road to the right path. We have lowered your city tax rate again this year, so our city tax rate is lower than the city of Carmel. It took us a while to get there, but the future is bright, and we're going to turn this thing around with the schools as well. But we, Carmel didn't do it overnight. They've had 30 years to do it. Carmel took off when busing was introduced into this, into city schools in Indianapolis, and they started to grow. We have the opportunity now, and it's our time, we have opportunities with We have opportunities with the certainty of US 31. That's a valuable avenue, and a place where we can really develop some AV which is needed. We're not questioning the fact that we need commercial development, but it's coming. The industrial park is a huge, big step in that. And with the landing of Toyota Bastion, which will have... They're producing some product up there now, but they will have a grand opening here shortly, I believe in April. They will bring other people to that park. Other companies are coming. We have a new company called Coffee Grinds, is it John? Grind... They were on Shark Tank, they're moving from California. I've heard people say they've left Chicago or Illinois. Why? Because their taxes are too high. People are leaving Ohio and other places because their taxes are too high. We have done very, very well in the city, and we have been very, very responsible to you, the taxpayers. This is just another tool in our toolbag. We have limited tools to use. TIF is one of those. And folks, we're faced with competition whether we like it or not. This thing about being socialist, I don't know where that comes from. This thing about saying Grand Park is a failure, I don't know where that's coming from. Yes, it took us longer to get out of the gate, but there wasn't a model for doing something like that. And it's proven very, very successful. Who would have said five years ago you would have a Colts contract for 10 years coming here? Those bring visitors. We've had success with tournaments, people coming from all over the world here, and they're amazed by what we can do. They're also amazed by the volunteer hours that people have put into this community, and giving back. I'd like to see a list of hands, how many people have volunteered for the city in this room tonight in some capacity? Look around you. These people are giving hundreds of hours in volunteer enterprises to the city. Our social clubs, the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, helping our schools, men are people, youth assistants. Look at all the things we have done, and thank your lucky stars you're here. And thank your lucky stars you've got a council that's responsible, and listening to you, and trying to do the right things, and study and work hard for you. I know Mr. John said he thinks we should go to every meeting, and show up and be there. I wish I could, there's only so much time in the day. But I try to make as many of them as I can, as do our other counselors. And I'm very proud of this body. And so, six months, 10 years, three years, I don't know. But I think this time has come, and it's the responsible thing to make a decision. It's only going to get more expensive. And so, I'd ask counselors for a vote tonight on what's before us, and let's get this job done. And I've probably expired my time, but I want to thank everybody for listening. Some of you are not going to agree with it, and I'll still call you friends. Some of you are going to agree with this decision tonight, and you'll be friends. Fifty percent of... I mean, if I'm betting a higher percentage, then it works out. And I think time will prove us that this was a good thing for our city. So, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other comments?
One thing that I think is very easy to forget is that 10, 11 years ago, when the Grand Junction Task Group was formed, we had a downtown that was dying. Businesses could not stay open. They would open for six months to a year, and they would close. All of our, many of our downtown homes were going from ownership to rentals. Many of our properties were decaying, as has already been noted. If we don't do this Plaza, which, and it's easy now to look at the successes downtown and say, wow, things are pretty good down here, what do we have to worry about? My concern is, if we stop, if we do not complete Grand Junction Plaza, much of that investment in our downtown was based on Grand Junction Plaza. You can ask almost any business owner, almost any new homeowner in downtown, why they invested in downtown. And I think that 99% of the time, you're going to get the answer that it was because of Grand Junction Plaza. It's easy to sit here now and say, gosh, things are pretty good. Why should we invest this money? But we can just as easily, with all the development going on west of 31, and that's going to continue, we can very easily still lose this downtown. And I don't know how many of you remember back to the comp plan days, but that was an overriding objective of the comp plan, was to make this intersection, right across the street here, our downtown. I have a real concern that if we do not move ahead with this Plaza, that could very easily reverse itself. All the comments regarding how this needs to be delayed is just ridiculous. I mean, this has been, this plan has been, the exact plan worth implementing has been before us for probably four years. We have been moving forward to this plan in that time with various construction projects. Probably the main reason we are just today looking at approving the financing for this plan is because we did not feel comfortable, as a city administration, as a council, to move forward prior to now. We have been looking at this for years. We believe very conservatively right now that we are in an excellent position to move forward with this. And for that reason, I will vote to move forward with this project tonight.
Glad to know I'm not the only one that has had some trouble sleeping at nights. This is a very big decision that's taken a while to get here. Counselor Hoover and Hake, ahead of him, explained this really well. I agree with everything they've said. We have worked on this for an incredibly long period of time. It's been very thoughtful, it has not been rushed. I don't begrudge anybody having a difference of opinion. That's what they should believe, or express if they believe that. But I'm hard-pressed to find value in continuing to delay and delay and delay. While there has been the appearance of development that may have occurred absent of something like this, we've heard comments made tonight by some of those people that have developed that the anticipation is what brought them here. Things don't happen on their own, they need a catalyst, they need a spur. I think this is going to be an incredible catalyst to help keep things from migrating elsewhere out of our downtown area, and grow it even further. And I'm comfortable that we've had a very good research financially to determine how to make this work in a sound, responsible manner, and it is time to proceed.
Chuck, comments?
Yeah, I'll take a couple of minutes and make some comments. With respect to everybody tonight that's spoken, I could take, probably not take exception, but I could debate either way. There have been some phenomenal comments made. We've obviously discussed this, planned this for years and years. Many of you, I've had an opportunity to speak at great length about some questions, some concerns. I sense the emotions in, that Bob expressed. I know that others of us have really put just a tremendous amount of effort and thought into this. This is not easy. What we decide here tonight is a beginning. And I could talk or debate for hours, and re-discuss what's gone in my head for weeks, months, and years. I've spoken to every counselor here, they know my thoughts and concerns. And regardless of the decision tonight, we're going to wake up tomorrow, and we still live in a great city. And if this is passed, we're going to go make it the best it can be. If it doesn't pass, we're still going to go out, and that's still an amenity that is probably the most valuable asset that any community has in Hamilton County. What we looked at a few years ago, beginning with the flood, and where we are today, has been paid for. And just going there today is an incredible place in itself. Now, maybe it doesn't look like much, but it is a, it's a real asset that we are going to take advantage of. So, no matter what happens here tonight, I do have some concerns. And we can talk about not doing this, and it's a huge mistake. We can talk about doing it, it's the greatest thing ever. Obviously, time will tell with that. I've considered the cost of the actual building of it, and also the sustainability of the operations. All of that has to be factored in. Again, it's an extremely difficult, complex matter. Differing opinions? I could go on and on, I will be glad to do that at any time, whether I vote yes or no. You're welcome to question me why I did that, and I'll be glad to explain that. Again, I'm really excited about what we have here. And one way or the other, we're going to continue to get better and better and better. We may be able to do it a little efficiently, more efficiently sometime, or we may have to take some risks. We've done both of those things. I think financially, I would like to reassure the public that I personally believe that the finances of this city are in great condition. And we've worked hard to get there. That doesn't necessarily give us an excuse, just because we have a tremendous line of credit at a bank, doesn't give us the reason to go borrow that. That's just a point. So, I appreciate the time. I didn't cover a lot of details, be glad to do that at any time with any of you. Thank you for the time.
And I'll add a couple of comments. I can remember the time we had a library of instructions, because the library is going to move out of downtown, and the community became engaged in order to keep the library where it was at, to maintain the integrity of the downtown, and give it a chance to survive. I would not have, I spent the weekend both being sick and doing financial, my financial analysis is this whole thing, but I didn't do it from a city standpoint, I did it from a taxpayer's standpoint. So, I looked at all taxing entities, because I think it's important. When one entity does something, you have to figure out what's the impact on everybody else, and what are they doing to you, and whatever. And over the next three years, there's going to be about $100 million worth of school debt roll off the tax rolls, which I think is huge for people to realize, that debt is now being reduced, not a matter of it's always add, it's always add, it's always add. And that doesn't mean because it's rolling off, now it's time for us to add. But when you're a growing community, there's a time when somebody has to step out and invest some money that will be paid off at some point in time. The schools were the ones that led. Now, they're in a fortunate position that, in all likelihood, debt will start rolling off at a pretty high frequency. I could just name school after school, about every other year where the debt's going to roll off. So, I think it's a perfect time for this to occur from a financial standpoint, to keep the township financially viable and stable, and the taxpayers not being impacted. And yes, I don't trust government any more than anybody else does, but a 1% tax cap is a 1% tax cap, and this project will not raise your taxes. If it doesn't happen, it will not lower your taxes. In fact, I will say it, as I've said it before, we could eliminate the city tax rate in its entirety, and no homeowner would notice a difference of anything in the rate they're paying, in their tax bill. 1% caps it. Now, there's a referendum rate that's going to be added in this year, 15 cents, they thought it was going to be 30, but it's only going to be 15 cents because of the growth in assessed value. And that 15 cents will decline because it's a fixed bond issue payment, just like the bond issue payments for anything that we issue will do that. But I think there are two major factors that I have to weigh in here. And that's, I consider thousands and thousands of hours of work of local citizens. I kind of wish that those local citizens had been told, here's kind of the magic number that you can't exceed, but we ask our local citizens to get involved and give us a product. And they did that over a 10- or 12-year period of time. And I think it'd be a little bit offensive and insulting to anybody who works on a project to have somebody say, eh, thanks a lot, too bad, but we work on our next project, because we have work coming up that we want help with. I watched the Spring Mill Station Committee work, and worked perfectly. I also have, not frequently, but occasionally, mentioned the fact that I wish we had a strategic plan. Because I think with strategic planning and benchmarks along the way, it makes it a lot easier to sell some things. We don't have that. But if we did, it would be good. Because a strategic plan allows you to control your destiny rather than have it controlled for you. And if we don't do this, then what we're going to say is, as the development occurs, bring it to us, and we'll see what haphazard development occurs. And some's going to. You know, I wish I could give an ROI, because I'm big on data. But I can't, because I don't know what's going to occur as a result of not doing this, as opposed to what will occur as a result of doing this on a more quick basis. So, there's so many factors that play in this that we have to deal with. But I'll stop there, because I don't want to repeat what other people have said. I do have one question I need to ask Brian, I think. Joe brought up the question on what is really ordinance 1906, the 8% tax rate. And he's going to have to vote on, we're all going to have to vote on 05 before we get to 06. But can 06 be modified to 5% instead of 8% and still be valid?
You have the ability to amend any ordinance in front of you before you adopt it. That being said, you might want to talk to either Jim or Jim about why that number is in there.
Could we get that clarification?
Jim Tree.
Okay.
One of the things you need to take into consideration in setting that maximum, we're in the unusual position of trying to predict what interest rates are going to be out five years from now, when the permanent bonds are issued. We've had a great response to temporary financing, which we cannot disclose yet until we have the authority to go ahead and move forward with that. But we've got to predict also what the parameters might need to be for that long-term financing, wouldn't be issued until 2024, with payments starting in '25 and '26. So, we do need a fairly high number in there. And I don't think five is going to cut it, not in a 24, 25-year bond. That's going to be awful tide, especially if you have some premium bonds that are going to carry higher market rates. I mean, there's a lot that factors into it. Your net yield is going to probably be lower than that, but you have to allow for some market interest rates for the underwriters to work. So, I mean, maybe we could do seven, I would not recommend five at all. You could amend it to something a bit lower than eight. I mean, I think that was just a top, I mean, that wasn't like a lot of analysis that went into it, Dr. Keen, but, you know, I could say, you know, you could put seven in there. The bottom line is, we're going to get the best deal for the city that we can when the time comes, and we see what the best market and the best combination of securities are, just like what we've done now for the construction financing.
May I ask a question about that? How and when is the rate established on these? In other words, we start out with bands, and they're converted to bonds.
Bonds.
Okay, how and when is the rate established?
For the bonds?
Yes.
Joe? Well, that, when we get about, we have up to five years to issue the bonds. So, one of the things we'll be doing is continuing to monitoring the TIF growth, and how quickly that we can move everything to TIF. Okay, so that will have an impact on whether we wait the five years, or we could potentially do something quicker.
As guardians of the purse, we need to make some judgment about what that might be.
So, within five years, we need to have those bonds ready to issue, the permanent bonds. So, probably, you know, the six months, four to six months before that, we'll start actively working on putting that together. But the rate won't actually be determined until April of 2024, when those bonds are actually sold. That's when it'll be determined.
So, we have 5% clear to 2024, basically, because the bands are five.
Well, they're going to be less than that, that's the maximum rate on the bands. They're going to be considerably less than that.
Sometime, we're going to have a rise in interest rates. I mean, we've been saying that for 20 years, but it's going to happen sometime, for whatever reason.
Right.
That's my concern.
I understand. I understand.
Jim?
Yeah, Jim.
Bands are for, we, we can retire the bands earlier than the five-year limit.
Yes, you've got a three-year call protection.
Three-year call protection, Joe.
So anytime after three years, you can refund if you find that the, the market's right, that your, your revenue streams are up there where we'd like to see them, where it's been projected, or higher.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let me ask one more question, just to see if I can figure this out. We have additional, additional needs that need to come out of TIF. And just like the MOU I recently saw at Order Works, which is, I believe, about $7 million that we're going to need to repay for a road, and that would be coming out of the same TIF. Things like that, when we talk about our projections, those kind of things aren't factored in, right?
That's correct. Those, the, the revenues from that project you're talking about are not included in John's projections that he's presenting to show that, that this is affordable. That's correct. They're not included. Now, they will be available revenues once the, that road project's repaid, probably within five to seven years, best guess.
And we, we still have debt on the other ones, like this road extension and stuff? I mean, we're needing that right now for that. I mean, we can't just pull all the money from the Core Four, right?
Well, no, it has to include the, the Main Street Bonds, East Side, there's a, there's a, not a lot, lot left on that, a lot of years left on that. So yes, it would cover all those.
Anything else? No other comments? Let the clerk call the roll.
Steve Hoover. Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Chuck Lehman.
No.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
No.
Cindy Spaljeryk.
No.
Mark Keen.
I will vote yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Moving on to ordinance 19-06, additional appropriation. Do we have a motion, please?
Vote to approve ordinance 1906.
Motion to approve ordinance 19-06. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ake. Do you want to lower the amount or anything in there?
I think that's past tense now. This is the one to do, and if you want to. What is? That position, that provision is in '05.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's past tense.
No comments?
Mr. President, I have a question. I, unfortunately, I can't open these ordinances. I've looked at them deeply before, but I, I can't, unfortunately, I just can't open them here tonight, for whatever reason.
None of us can. We can't open any of our documents.
So my, my question is, ordinance 1906, with respect that we passed 1905, tell me how, exactly how those interact. I hate to, I mean, I'm trying to figure out if those two tie directly together, or if, if it's prudent for us to consider that differently. And with consideration that 1905 passed, then is it fiscally more responsible to do 1906? How do those two tie together? I'm, I'm sorry, but I've tried to open those for a long time here, so I could read through them.
1906 is an additional appropriation, which we have to do in order to spend the, the money to issue the bonds, I believe. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean...
That's correct. State law requires that the bond proceeds, in this case, the band proceeds, because they're not part of the approved budget, there are additional funds coming into the budget during the year. State law requires that there be an additional appropriation of those funds. If you issue the bonds and you can't spend the money, you're not going to issue the bonds.
I mean, this is very typical of any bonds that we approve. Any funding that we approve, we have to authorize the spending of those funds.
Does that answer your question, Chuck?
I, I'd just like to see the document, but it's, it's okay. Thank you so much. Scroll that up, would you please? Thank you. Now down, please. Thank you.
You good now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, I am. Sorry, I apologize.
Are there questions on this ordinance?
Yeah, I do, the project's 35 million, and this is 39 million. Is that that 4 million in capitalized?
Capex.
Capitalized interest?
Again, it's a combination of not knowing what the interest rate's going to be and just making sure we don't have to come back and do this all over again. So right now, I think that the permanent bond, my best estimate is about 37.8, just under $38 million. But if we don't give us some room for contingencies and other things, and the rates going up, you know, I mean, you're just going to put yourself in a bind. So that's what, the 39 was a preliminary estimate of what now, as we zeroed more in on the temporary financing numbers at the 35 million, I think it's going to be just under 38 is where we're going to be probably on the other. But when we originally did it, we added some cushion in there just to make sure we get it done. So that's where the 39 is. We don't expect to spend the 39, but we are asking for that much maximum approval.
Other questions? Call the roll.
Bob Horkey.
Yes.
Steve Hoover.
Yes.
Chuck Lehman.
No.
Jim Ake.
Yes.
Mark Keen.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
I'm going to vote no, but I think we do need, I, I think we do need the Plaza, but I think it's too expensive. That's just my opinion, so that's why I'm voting no.
Cindy Spaljeryk.
Similar note, no.
Motion carries four, three.
Okay, the chair is going to request a five-minute recess. We will reconvene again in about 9:25. Okay, let's get back in session, please. Everybody's lost their monitor now, huh? Okay, we're ready for a new business, which is resolution 19-102. Amanda?
Good evening, President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Amanda Rubidoo with Economic Development Department. Grind's LLC has filed a personal property abatement request for an investment of approximately $5.6 million in manufacturing equipment for their new facility that will occupy 27,000 square feet within the Westfield Business Center building located on Oak Ridge Road just north of 169th Street. Ken Warren, Chief Operating Officer of Grind's LLC, will be giving a short presentation on the nature of the business and the proposed project at the conclusion of my summary. The site is currently in an economic revitalization area, which was approved back in 2008. Since the economic revitalization area has already been established, council may consider and adopt the tax abatement for Grind's this evening. The request is for a five-year personal property abatement, which is structured the same as previously approved personal property abatement requests. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I'm going to go ahead and have a short video, and then Ken will come up and give you a little bit more information on the project.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, not that eye.
No, not that eye.
That's way too loud.
You can apply.
Let me scoot you back a little bit. All right, now we're going to go.
Coffee Pouches are filled with freshly ground coffee that's then flavored and supplemented with B vitamins and other important nutrients to keep you bright and alert while providing a healthy alternative to chewing tobacco. Our product has unique opportunity to capitalize and gain market share in three of the most lucrative markets in the world: tobacco, coffee, and energy. And as former players ourselves, we spent the past two years building our brand through our contacts in both Major and Minor League Baseball, with over 20 Major League teams currently using the product, including the Chicago Cubs and Boston Red Sox. In the U.S. alone, chewing tobacco is a $4.5 billion a year industry, and it's estimated that over half of all users make at least one attempt to quit their habit. With your help and experience, we can take our product into every gas station and convenience store, not only in the U.S., but in the world. So sharks, we urge you to catch this golden opportunity before Pat and I knock it out
Good evening, council. I'm Ken Warren, and I work for Grind's Coffee Pouches. We're excited to move here to Westfield. We're looking forward to opening a new production facility in our warehouse. You can see here's some of the flavors that we offer. Perfect for any occasion, late night, council meeting, or whatever. If anybody'd like a sample, if anybody'd like a sample, I'll pass it around. I brought enough for everybody, just in case. So this is a, this is a retail package of what we will have for a final product. We have 10 flavors that are currently on our SKU list. Those will all be made here in Indiana. When the owners first approached me to move this business, it was in October of 2018. They called me, and there were several considerations they were making. California, Oregon, and Colorado were the top three, so Portland, Denver, and then somewhere in California. When I came on board, I asked them to consider the Midwest. I've built several plants here in Indiana, as well as Groveport, Ohio, in the Columbus area. Between Indiana and Ohio, it's a very similar working environment. There's infrastructure that's very good for business in both. There is existing warehouse space and crossroads, very good traffic lanes. I live here in Indiana. I'm about 12 minutes from where this facility is located. So for me, I made a pretty strong push for right here at home, so I wouldn't have to We are relocating our headquarters from California. It's currently in Oakland. There's a warehouse there that employs about 26 people currently. Those will all be moved here to Indiana. We offered relocation, nobody accepted, so we are hiring 100% new people in this area. The average salary at $40,000 is a very conservative number. One of the lowest-paying jobs we'll have is a 40-hour-a-week job at $35,000, and that's with zero overtime. The capital investment is $5.7 million. That includes production facility for food space built out inside an existing warehouse, as well as capital equipment purchase for our manufacturing lines. Some of that coming from Germany for the main production line of the pouches. And then we were able to partner with several local companies, for instance, a labeling company here in Westfield, Enterprise Marketing Products, located just down the road from us. We've done a lot of partnerships with Purdue Food Science, so we're engaging them to help with all of our reformulations. Our products are currently made in Denmark, shipped to Oakland, and then 75% of our customer base is east of Mississippi. So we are relocating all of the production to Indiana globally. We are moving into the 27,000-square-foot facility. 7,500 of that is just production space right now in a food manufacturing environment, so we built out the facility specifically for that. We have room to do that one more time, and this will take us to about 10 times the volume that we currently are. And those opportunities are on the table because we're just now entering retail space. We were an e-commerce company, sold 2.5 million units last year, half of which was online, half of which was retail, without ever trying to sell retail. So we have a few salespeople, but basically, all they did was maintain people that ordered through our website. We're now proactive. We have a retail sales chairman. He's going after all kinds of retail sales. We just landed Casey's, for instance, which is basically tied for the second-largest retailer in gas chains, convenience in the U.S. The Westfield Business Center is on Oak Ridge Road. If you're familiar with that development, we're just south of the Thiem and Construction Resource Group has helped me put together your estimated community impact, so your change in earnings, your change in tax, your, sorry, change in taxes on production and imports, change in jobs. So this includes everything from the construction that goes into the actual facility, to the partnerships that we're making with Purdue University, Enterprise Marketing Products. We've engaged Invista and Carmel to look at our FedEx contracts for negotiation. We have local IT companies that are looking into doing all of our infrastructure, some of our Excel Dynamics, which is our ERP tracking software inside the facility. So that total impact takes into account all of that. So any questions that I can answer?
So, so what does your product do? I mean, you chew it like chewing tobacco?
You do. It's a direct, yeah. It's a direct replacement for...
Right, you'll like it.
Yeah, absolutely. You can take one down, pass it around. If you were to open it up, it looks just like a pouch, like a skull bandit.
Oh, okay.
Same type, same type of thing. So it's not loose, it's in a pouch. You take that, put it in your lip.
Is it going to keep me awake tonight?
Yes, it's quarter cup of coffee.
Sorry. East of the Mississippi.
East of the Miss, okay.
Yeah, 75% of our customer base is east of the Mississippi.
Okay, I thought you said they were, it was sold in Mississippi.
Heavy, heavy in Michigan, heavy in Ohio, east coast and down south, southeast coast. We also have a, a pretty good following online e-commerce through millennial buyers within the city. So this is also used as a direct replacement for, say, a Red Bull energy drink. It's maybe a healthier alternative to the energy market. So where we're located in retail is right next to your Five Hour Energy. So we're not in a tobacco section, we're a tobacco cessation product, and we're separate from that.
You are a tobacco cessation product?
Correct. That's the number-one goal of the business. Our mission statement reflects that. We want to profoundly help people change their tobacco habits.
And how much would one of these lose?
One pouch is equal to about a quarter cup of coffee.
No, I mean, how, what's the retail price?
Standard's $5, so anywhere between $4.5 and $5.5 retail.
I probably will never use the product, but...
Fair.
It's, it's very, it's a very fascinating product, and I think there are, it potentially could prevent a lot of issues...
I guess.
...with tobacco users. And I understand it's been very popular in baseball, which is one of the big uses. I mean, I think it's an exciting product. I could say I probably won't use it, but I think it's an exciting product, and I'm happy to see you relocating from California to Indiana.
Thank you. We're okay with you not using it, but we, we do want, people are currently using tobacco to use it, and we'd like to see any of our youth fields be tobacco-free and be able to support that. So if we can be partners at Grand Park at some point, that'd be great.
Well, welcome. I want to be the first to say welcome to Westfield. Glad you're coming, and I think this is real exciting, and conjunction and proximity to Grand Park. I'd like to provide you opportunities.
We appreciate the infrastructure you built.
Thank you very much. This is a action item for tonight. So are there any other questions or comments? Clerk would call the roll.
We need a motion.
I'm sorry. You call the roll, but we, my, my mistake. Take a, take a break and lose control of everything. Is there a motion to approve resolution? Is there a motion to approve Resolution eighteen, pardon me, nineteen dash one oh two?
Sorry?
I have Cindy moving and Jim seconding. Any questions or comments? Now the clerk can call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, another new business item for introduction and a public hearing tonight. Voluntary annexation, ordinance nineteen dash oh seven, Pam.
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the Council. Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for public hearing, I have a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation for the approximately thirty-seven acres planned as the Emery Trace subdivision. This item was advertised for a public hearing, and it would be planned for your adoption in May. I do have the petitioner here. He does not plan to present, but is available for questions, as am I, if you have any of the department. Thank you.
We have a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at nine forty concerning ordinance nineteen dash oh seven, the voluntary annexation, Emery Trace. Time flies, so we'll close the public hearing at, one minute later than whatever that was we opened it, forty-one. And that will be up for adoption consideration next month. Ordinance nineteen dash oh eight, the South Oak PUD Amendment, Dane.
For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening is introduction of a proposed amendment to the South Oak PUD specific to the real estate commonly known as one-six-four-six-five South Park Drive. This PUD amendment requests that multiple uses that are not currently permitted be allowed on the real estate, all of these uses, with the exception of health, fitness, and exercise center, are currently permitted under the enclosed industrial zoning of the UDO. Additionally, the petitioner is requesting to modify any side buffer yard from forty to twenty feet, and in doing so, require that a three-foot mound be installed top with evergreen trees to screen any loading and unloading docks. Similarly, the petitioner is requesting that in the event any loading docks are placed on the south facade of the building, that the buffer yard be reduced at a three-foot mound with evergreen trees be installed to screen the loading and unloading berths. Under the existing zoning for both the west side yard and south side yard, buffer yard requirements is forty feet in depth with one evergreen tree and five evergreen shrubs every thirty feet. There is no mounding currently required by the existing zoning. A neighborhood meeting is scheduled to be held Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, at seven p.m. at City Hall. And Elizabeth Williams, a planner with Clerk Quinn Law, is present this evening to provide
Good evening. Thank you. I will be brief due to the hour. As Dane said, I am Elizabeth Williams. I'm a line use planner. And in a little bit more detail on the request for the buffer yard or reduction on the south side, there will actually be a space before you get to the paved area that, between the building and the buffer yard, I'm sorry, the part that is not paved, from the property line north to where the, any kind of maneuvering or anything that's going to take place on the south side of that building, there's a fifty-foot utility easement there. And we can't plant in that area, but we will be providing, as the was explained, a mound with landscaping north of that. So the total width of the area is be more like sixty-five feet, but we just can't plant in all of that. So we're having a reduction in the planting area, but we're doing a mound there instead. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Is this the project where there's gonna be separate overhead doors along the whole backside for each of the users?
I thi-, yes, that's the plan, and...
That's the plan? Nothing's changed? Okay.
And we will have a plan for your consideration there, just still tweaking it at this point.
Any other questions? Then we'll move that on to APC. Next up, ordinance nineteen dash oh nine, I Beach Thirty-One of Grand Park, Pam.
Thank you again. Pam Howard with Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, we have a new PUD district to be known as I Beach Grand Park PUD to accommodate a beach volleyball facility. This three-acre site is located on the north side of one-hundred-eighty-sixth Street, west of Grand Park Boulevard, and is immediately east of the existing Pacers Field House. The site is currently zoned AGSF-1. The proposed PUD accommodates the use and also includes standards to accommodate the site design and architecture shown in the concept plan and character exhibits. The site will be scheduled for a public hearing at the April first Plan Commission Meeting. I have Katie Connor here with I Beach Thirty-One to make a presentation, after which both she and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
I appreciate it. I'm Katie Connor. I've met with pretty much all of you a couple times, and I appreciate your time. But, phew, that was a hard act to follow tonight, so, again, I appreciate your time. I know we've all been here a long time. So, Dave, you wanna go ahead and share a little bit?
Yeah, thank you, councilors. Thank you, everyone here. This is still a work in progress. Like Katie said, I know we've met with many of you. As far as the, the only thing that I think we'd like to address tonight is the fact that the architecture is still a work in progress for us, considering it is located on Grand Park, the Grand Park property. We're still looking at a couple options that we will share with you over the next couple days, but initially, you know, this is our, this is our plan for the property. So like Katie said, I mean, it's, it's a multi-sport, but majority volleyball facility. It's sand, called beach volleyball, outside and sand inside, as well as some hard surface courts inside. So if you have any questions about that, you know, please, please let us know as soon as possible, because like I said, we're still working through a lot of this.
Do we have any more of the presentation, or is that it? That's all the stuff right now?
Yeah, it's just these presentation sheets.
Okay. Yeah, and...
Other than the elevation.
Yeah, like Dave said, we can address, one thing that I want you all to consider over this process is that we're looking into some new, newer technology around here as far as building materials, and it's a steel-framed fabric building. It's not a blow-up building, it's not a tent, it's thirty-year warranty. These are some pictures of the buildings, and the fabric exterior is self-cleaning property top coat, so it doesn't get dirty. I know that was a question that Cindy had asked and some of the other city council members. It meets all building codes, it's compliant with current IPC codes, energy codes for Indiana, any collateral loading, fire suppression, and hanging loads. The sidewalls can be a variety of materials. It can have the PVC membrane all the way down, it can have steel, brick, stone for architectural break within it. So there's a lot of fun opportunities that we can introduce in here, and it's just something unique and different that we can bring to Grand Park.
I guess something else I'd like to point out is the fabric, such as the one you'd see here, it's not a cost savings, it's actually a building efficiency savings and different aesthetics. You know, it's something different. It's, it would be unique, you know, in the area in Westfield, so I want to make sure everyone knows that this is not about saving costs. It's more about just being unique.
And then, just wanna end with that, just three main advantages for doing these fabric buildings. We can share more detail with anybody that wants it, is that it's fast to put up, takes less than a month, it's less than two percent air loss, so two times the energy efficiency as a metal building, and the interior lining is designed especially for sports application. So there's a lot of advantages to going this route. So if anybody, do you have anything else?
Any questions?
On your site, one of the issues might be, because it's tight, parking, and that's of a concern. The other concern I have is have you met with the owner of the...
Pacers Athletic?
Yeah.
Andy.
Yeah.
Andy Carr.
Yeah, we have introduced the conversation, and I think he's excited about the opportunity. I think there's some obstacles to talk through regarding parking and the uses of what's going on in our building, but I think everyone we've talked to is really excited about diversifying the sports in Grand Park, bringing beach volleyball here. We have the opportunity to bring people from coast to coast, professional events here, which is a really fun opportunity, I think, like I said, just to diversify the sports. And we, the parking allotment, you know, we configured based off of formula on our square footage, so we have the, you know, the maximum amount of parking that's recommended for our size building. And we're hoping that if we can work with Pacers Athletic Center, that it would be a good thing for Grand Park as a whole, for overflow parking. Cindy and I talked about this a little bit, too, that it can help both of our venues, because as we know, parking is on the street right now for many of the Pacers Athletic events and even throughout Grand Park. So if we can help alleviate that with having as large of a parking lot as we do to accommodate some overflow parking and kind of share that role.
And then it faces our championship ballfields, too, with the outside courts, and I hadn't seen this location until recently, as you hadn't settled on that. So I understand how the noise can be, it's very good for volleyball, but can be a distraction to the other players, and I just would like that addressed in some fashion.
I can speak to that. You're referring to the field here, correct? Yes. Yeah, this is a large hill. The outdoor sand courts would be located here. Really, this, this hill blocks the view from here, and the, just the distance from here to here. We've walked the site here several times. I mean, even on this field, you know, you talk about, what's this, six, six hundred feet away here. We don't have a lot of noise coming from the sand volleyball courts either. It's mostly, adult leagues are our most common, adults with families that bring their children. So, or young adults, you know, that aren't out there screaming. They're playing, they're athletes, you know, they're there for the sport. So I guess, does that help answer your question a bit?
Yes, you were pretty loud at your grand opening over there on Thirty-One, but that was exciting. That was really exciting. I couldn't believe the amount of people it turned out. It was very loud.
Yep.
Yep, it was.
And, and that was a special event, the grand opening. We had a band, and typically we don't have, you know, music that loud and events at that caliber. So it would be a very rare circumstance that the noise would exceed a normal noise level.
All right, those are my questions, so...
But just lastly, I could tell you that the two speakers we have out there now at our existing facility, a lot of times the players will tell us to turn them down.
Okay.
They're yelling the score back and forth, they want to be able to hear.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from Council? Questions? No, we'll move this on to APC. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last item, new business, ordinance nineteen dash ten, Urban Vines PUD, Pam.
Thank you again. Pam Howard with Economic and Community Development. Before you this evening, we have a new PUD district to be known as the Urban Vines PUD to accommodate an existing winery. The five-acre site is located at three-oh-three East One-Sixty-first Street and is currently zoned AGSF-1. The existing winery, which opened in two thousand sixteen, is permitted by a special exception granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The property is also subject to several variances of development standard. The proposed PUD will incorporate all of the existing approvals, as well as address new items such as temporary events and food trucks. This item is also scheduled for a public hearing at the April first Plan Commission Meeting. I do have Noah Heron of Urban Vines here tonight. He does not plan to present, but is available for questions, as am I, if you have any of the department. Thank you.
Council members have any questions?
Is there the neighborhood meeting scheduled yet for this? No?
No.
No? Okay, do you plan to have one?
Uh, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, if you could let us know, just so we could be there.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Pam. Move this on also to APC. Any, any other cards for guests to address the council?
I do have one card, Mr. Jeff McClurg, sorry. If he's still here, he should get a prize.
We got grounds.
No more for you.
No more for me. I'm, I'm gonna live through this.
My name is Jeff McClurg. I live at one-seven-zero-eight-seven Olympus Court, Westfield. I thank the Council for their patience and the opportunity for me to speak. Our subdivision is having a discussion regarding covenants, specifically parking, street parking, and restricted vehicles. Mr. Matt Skelton has answered many of my questions, however, there are several items I'd like to clarify with the Council. Some residents of our subdivision have referenced multiple sources speaking on behalf of the City of Westfield, WPD, Street Department, unspecified Westfield employees, as well as City Council and individual City Council members. Those residents are implying, if not outright saying, that the city is taking a position that homeowner covenants, particularly those regarding parking, especially street parking, and prohibited vehicles are not enforceable. Residents violating HOA parking and restricted vehicle covenants are quoting or misquoting a member of this council that if a resident is involved in any city, in, if a resident is not violating any city ordinance, the homeowner's covenant is not enforceable, so the HSA is powerless to respond in the City of Westfield. That resident is also claiming that the same member of this council stated, and I quote, "If a homeowners association or property management company tows a vehicle, they will be charged with unlawful taking of property and made to pay restitution." This was the council member's exact words to me on the phone, state of the resident. I asked if I could quote them, and they responded yes. So my concern is as follows. Is this correct? If a homeowners association board member is involved initiating a decision to enforce a covenant to have a compost box renewed, removed from a resident's premises, is Westfield or WPD going to charge them with unlawful taking of property or any other crime? Our covenants agreed to by each homeowner upon purchase states that we can tow. So if Westfield and Westfield PD will not participate in towing, will Westfield PD participate in prevention of towing or hinder any other homeowner association business? I have several more questions along the line as to what extent does Westfield get involved in homeowner business, contracts, and enforcements? If I could solicit some comments from you now, that may answer my additional questions.
I think we're gonna refer this to the legal people over here.
You have a lot of questions there, and a lot of them are specific to the homeowners association you're referencing, so I can't really give you a full answer on everything, but I'll be happy to sit down and talk to you at any time you'd like.
Okay.
Now, make sure you have...
Okay.
Jeff, you may have said, but what neighborhood are you?
I'm sorry, it's Summit Lakes. I'm at one-hundred-and-sixty-ninth Street between Gray and Cary.
And Jeff, the counselor you might be, she might be referring to is myself. I spoke with the police, our police department, and then I think our police department did reach out to her and clarified everything to her, if, if this is what I'm thinking. So I think it's best that we respond to you and answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Covenant? Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
All right. That's the only card, Matt?
Yes, sir.
All right, then, Council comments?
Can I make one?
You're a council person.
Thank you. I worked with one of our residents, Hannah Semler, who is now a senior, and as part of her Girl Scout program, she was doing her golden project, and I'm probably getting that wrong, because I haven't slept in days, I think. Anyway, make a long story short, her project was to do a blessings box, and I will say she had a whole lot of trouble finding the actual spot to put it in, in our city. And luckily, Public Works and Chris McConnell worked with her, as did I, to make that happen. And I guess I did not see it out here, because I was rushing in, but I think it's installed as of today. So I'd probably like to have Hannah in here at some point, just to talk about that project, and, but take a look outside, it's somewhere.
I saw it coming in, and it's there.
Very good. Do invite her when, when she has an opportunity. It won't be a regular, whenever you can get her here, get her here.
I saw it coming in, and it's there.
Do invite her when, when she has an opportunity. It won't be a regular, whenever you can get her here, get her here.
I have an APC report, very brief. APC met last Monday evening. We sent the Lancaster PUD and the Oak Manor North to PUD, which we acted on this evening with a positive recommendation of the council. We also approve, approved conditionally the development plan and site plan for tire discounters, and also a detailed development plan for tire discounters pending approval of the PUD. That's it.
Other council comments? Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, just three things. We welcomed three new firefighters and a police officer in the last week. We're glad to have Kevin Brock, Charlie Johnson, and Jordan Crane join the Fire Department, and Morgan Burns is a new police officer, so. Get to know them, say hello. Westfield, welcome. Did that silly running melt-the-trail thing. Apparently it was, I'm in the minority, it was a huge success, the highest participation, and once again, way to go, Smithers. Daddy-daughter dance. They opened it up to its normal registration in fifty minutes. Every spot was taken. And so they opened up a second night, and that's also well underway. So that, that's fun. I like that. Lastly, you know, last Friday was last day of the one some of us call Mom there at City Service Center, Diane Peyton. After twenty-four years working for the city in human relations, started working for Jerry Rosenberg back when we were a town. And she has watched the city grow to, I don't know how many employees, to the two-hundred-and-ten or fifteen we have today, and has been the one to walk them through all of the medical issues and the paperwork challenges and the various and sundry jobs that go with the HR director of a city our size, and we're really gonna miss Diane. She's obviously been here twice as long as I have, and so it's, we're gonna miss her. So if you happen to see her around town...
Historical society, so she's not going far.
Well, she's not, except she'll spend a lot of time in Hawaii, but, yeah, she'll be right here, and, you know, she lives right here in town, obviously, so. But what a, what a lady after twenty-four years here. Thanks.
Is that motion to adjourn?
Second.
Cindy, you can put anybody down you want for first and second. It all came simultaneously. All in favor, please say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.